Has the amount changed?
Yes, sir.
Can you come tell us?
Hey. You're splitting money is right now.
That's all I need.
Have all of them.
Yeah, I said I'm gonna read it here, but then they're going, I think Mr. Donegan and the sheriff. Comes to this, then whoever makes the motion.
I had to add that.
Morning, thank you for being here. If your stand will be led in a word of prayer by Commissioner Melton, remain standing for our pledge.
Let's pray, our most holy God, Father, we give you praise to go with us morning. Thank you for Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and Father, we ask that you would give us the sermon this morning, Father, make the best decisions for the citizens of Benzen County. Father, we'd also ask that you be blessed and take care of our first responders and our military, especially, Father, those that are in armed way as we speak today. Father bless our nation, bless our Congress, bless our President, Father, I pray that they would make the right decisions for the citizens of this country. Continue to be with us and forgive us of our shortcomings and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I call to order the regular session meeting of the Benzen County Commissioners Court Wednesday, June the twenty-third, twenty-twenty, at nine oh three AM. Now its quorum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court, approval same for June the ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, corrections, additions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner LaBret. Any questions or discussion about the bills?
Yes, there is. I'd like to include an invoice from Cannon Construction. They're doing our remodel work on the JP office in Will's Point from a freeze where we lost the water line and flooded the building. And we had some back work issues that we had to get done. And so it made it run a little late. So I have a copy of this here and a P O. It's for seven thousand dollars to Cannon Construction. And I'd like to ask the court to approve that along with it and then ask Kenny if he would to make a check for that.
Is that a motion?
At the.
Addition.
We got a motion second. They.
You may have me and my re- well.
A redo to include that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, your motion does include that addition of that payment of seven thousand dollars to Cannon Construction for remodeling. Is that your second, Tim?
Yes.
Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion of ratifying county bills? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business, any general business we need to be made aware of? Anyone out there have any general business, any announcements or anything? I think we did have a farmer's market, Dan, you did a great job with that. I thought it was very successful, the basement was full of people. But any other general business? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, anyone sign up for public comments? Okay, we do have, Mr. Ronnie Jones has asked to speak. Mr. Jones, you want? On item number ten and item number sixteen. Okay. Mr. Jones, you do have three minutes. No.
I'm gonna start with number sixteen, folks. That'll be the easier. We have said in Commissioner Port meetings that y'all have issued signs to be placed for no trucks, also speed limits on various roads. And one of those was the roads I live on. After we posted that sign, we probably have at least seventy-five percent more people driving eighty miles an hour on it than thirty-five. What are you gonna do to get that corrected and enforce what you post? In precinct three, they hired somebody to do that on no through trucks and I understand those trucks have stopped. They don't go down that road anymore. I don't see that happening in precinct two. I haven't been to one or four. But you need to have some kind of enforcement if you're gonna post that stuff, otherwise quit posting. You're wasting your money on signs. And number ten, why do we need a reserve position for a fire marshal's office? The fire marshal works for the Commissioners Court. They're not an elected office. So y'all control what they do. And you have a reserve fund for the Commissioners. And I hope that comes out when you start discussing that item. Still my opinion of doing what we're doing right now, instead of doing it when we get to that topic item, still stands. I think we ought to be able to talk when y'all start doing it, instead of saying, I propose it, I make the recommendation, I second it, all in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. No one else has signed up for public comments. We'll move to item number seven, presentation of Benzen County Historical Commission, twenty-twenty Distinguished Service Award. Benzen County, and there are several members here present with us today. Benzen County has one, is, in my opinion, one of the very best historical commissions, county commissions. They do a great work. They, they're always working, a matter of fact. You may have seen the, the discussion about the courthouse being cleaned. This is a historical monument. You go through the historical commission to get permission to use certain chemicals and stuff. We have done a test on the back back here. I've worked with Elvis, they just do a great job on the history, preserving the history of Benzen County. And so the Austin, the State Historical Commission has give Benzen County Historical Commission the twenty-twenty award, distinguished service award, we'll need pictures in just a moment, but it says our, our preservation partners faced great challenges from the pandemic, but they redirected their efforts and ensured that the history, programming and preservation projects continued in communities across Texas. And the Texas Historical Commission Executive Director, Mark Wolf, said the Benzen County Historical Commission has demonstrated remarkable resilience, resilience and innovation, and we're happy to honor its extraordinary volunteers for the twenty-twenty Distinguished Service Award. If y'all would come up, we would like to present this award to you. It was all the historical commission.
I believe that's the thirteenth one in a row.
We can't count.
Well, that's what I work with every day, Elvis. Thank you, thank you for the service you provide to Benzen County. Item number eight, discuss and consider contracting with Lombarder, Guggen, Blair Sampson LLP for collection of fines and fees for district and county clerk. We do have Jim Allison and Richard here from Lombarder, and they brought the new attorney. Where is the, that? Introduce him, Richard, to everyone.
Judge, this is Scott Ward, he is one of our new attorneys with the firm. Comes from Leo, yeah, from the Leo area. He's here kind of lurking lots, he's gonna bring a lot to the firm.
Okay.
And of course, Jim Lambert, I don't think he needs to be in the address.
Yeah, Jim Lambert, correction.
I just realized I said Allison.
I'm sorry about that, Jim.
We've got our very major extraordinary Hannah.
Hannah.
I'm a little jealous, I can't even remember every time I did in front of the court, I never got a picture.
Oh, really? Bill Steph over here in the dress.
Yes, sir. We're here today to ask you to consider awarding a contract to our firm. I am famous now. My mom would beat me if I didn't smile for a picture. We're asking y'all to consider awarding this contract with the firm to collect the fees and fines, court costs for the county clerk, district clerk, for the courts here in Benzen. As you know, our firm's been in business for about forty-five years. What you may not know is we've been collecting court costs and fines and fees for all levels of court in Texas, from district court all the way down to municipal courts and parking authorities since nineteen ninety-eight. We use the same system that we use to find defendants that are difficult to find. You know, we've talked before about finding John Smith in Canton versus finding John Smith who's from Canton living in Dallas. We use all that same technology, the same databases, all of the same skip tracing to attempt to find defendants who have warrants or outstanding court costs or fines. It's a very, very powerful and very effective system. We've talked with Ms. Strickland and Ms. Wilson about this currently, since y'all have changed over to LGS, we do not have a collection service. And we believe that we're gonna bring a lot to the table. We'll be able to help, we'll be able to assist, and we'll also be able to relieve some of the workload from firm employees. The way we do this is both Ms. Wilson and Ms. Strickland will get a questionnaire from our firm that they'll get to sort of custom tailor what the collection process will look like. Everything from how often they want to give us a data load, we would prefer once a week, but we'll take it daily, we'll take it as often as they want to. To, they'll actually get to pick the letters that we send out to try to enforce these outstanding fees. We're here not to supplant the clerks and the courts in doing it, but to assist and to make that effort, reach out a little bit further. The data loads, we worked with LGS system before, it's a very simple system for us. We will have an IT person who is dedicated to Benzen to put a patch on the laptop. I'm an attorney, not an IT guy, so I'm gonna use very vague words here. But they'll be able to click a few buttons, drop it down, and it will be sent to us. Also in that is a, another portal we call Client View. As you know, I did criminal offense work for many years before coming to Benzen and one thing, or before coming to Lombarder. And one of the things I always heard is, well, Mr. Brand, nobody ever told me I had a warrant, nobody ever told me these charges were out there. They will actually, the judges, the clerks, everyone will actually be able to see how many times somebody with our firm has had contact with each defendant. And we do that contact through mailings. If something comes back, we put it back in and do another skip trace, if we get anything returned back. But we also have a call center, turned out we have eight call centers with an open six hundred and sixty-seven lines. With that, we're calling out on those letters, we have people calling back. Every time one of them, every time an defendant contacts one of our collection professionals, it's automatically logged in our system. The comments they say, so the judge will be able to see all of this when they're considering the outstanding warrants. Our mailing campaign is continuous. That's one of the things that I really like about our program. Most of the collection firms, after three years, scale way back or quit and leave. Our mail program keeps on. I've realized there's two types of defendant who come in and pay their bills. One is the one who honestly didn't know that there was a warrant out for him. They get a letter and they go, oh, I need to come pay this right now, scares them into it. The other one is, they got a ticket in their twenties. They're now in their thirties, they're starting a family, they're trying to become an active and contributing part of society. And they go to get a loan or they go to apply for an apartment and this pops up, or they get a job and this pops up, and they wanna take care of it. Our system follows them the whole time. And when it hits them, they can call back into us, because once they apply for that loan, once they apply for that apartment, whatever it is that flagged it, we're gonna send them contact information again. And they're gonna be able to come in and take care of it at that point. One of the, one of the other things that I've been asked a lot recently on this is what do we do if the defendant comes in front of a court and the judge decides that they're an indigent or that they've sent it out? Judge has complete and utter control over that. We are not the court. We will work with both Karen and Susan, how they wanna take payments. I prefer that the clerks and the courts continue to take it. But we can set up portals, we can do it in-house, we can do it here, we can do a hybrid between the two. This is part of that questionnaire where we work it out. If the judge decides that they are entitled to but not for being sent out a charge, the county is in charge for our services. We only collect the fee on the dollars that you guys collect. So if the judge decides there's an energy situation and wants to allow community service, anything along those lines, we only collect on the dollars. The contract that we are giving you also includes, this is one of the last things I wanna say that I think sets us apart from most of the other collections, is all of our attorneys that represent you in Benzen, including me personally, we have a meaningful attorney involvement system. And every time that there's a data load, I get it emailed. Every time that there's a change in warrants, either new ones issued that have become outstanding or there's a payment, I find out about it and I monitor it. As you know, I'm very active in Benzen, I stay on top of all the delinquent tax. I promise you our firm will stay on top of the fees and fines collections to say. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
You, you said your fee, Susan, do you have anything? Okay. It's.
And that's, that is, just like in the delinquent tax, that is borne by the defendant. It's a cost angle, it doesn't affect any of the money coming to the county.
So what they collect, they had, it used to be thirty percent of this, is thirty percent above what they collect, but it does not cost the county.
That's right. Until, until something is collected.
Okay. You've heard from Richard, any questions of Richard? And you support this, Susan?
Yes.
And bottom line, Ada used to do this. But when we went to LGS, we lost it. And so is, is there a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner West. Okay, got a second by Commissioner Pearson to contract with Lombarder, Guggen, Blair Sampson LLP for collection of fines and fees for district and county clerk. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. They found you.
Thank you, guys.
We got the mug, we got the mugshot. Thank you. Thank you, Jim, thank you for what you do for Benzen County. Thank, thank you, guys. Item number nine, discuss and consider allowing sheriff to accept donation from Benzen County Republican Club in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents to be used for additional ballistic vests and other safety equipment. Doc, and Mr. David Donegan, if y'all wanna come up with him. Oh, anyone that was involved in that, yeah, feel free to come up, because we're gonna wanna get a, a picture.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners. So first thing I'd like to do is thank these folks here. They, they set up a fundraiser for the sheriff's office to raise funds for vests and other safety equipment that we need. You guys were generous enough to give us a budget to allow us to buy the uniforms. And I would at this time like to point out something, if I could have Chief and Lieutenant Williams stand up. These are our new uniforms. Not sure what her vest is a different shade yet, but maybe. So these vests and these uniforms, if I can have one of y'all, you could take your, out of your, carry off and just show them underneath what. So when these guys get the office, it's hot, you see you wear your vest up, your uniform. They get the office, they can take their vest off and they can cool off. And my rule is when they go back out the door, the vest must be on. So when they go back out, they put that on real quick and they head out the door. And this provides some comfort for them, it's modern. Keeps your temperatures down, keeps them interjects like a workwear. So this is what they look like, we're very proud of them. And you'll see the rest of our deputies, I think we've got almost a couple issues, a couple people have to go get fitted. This is the new look you'll see out on the street with our homes. That's professional, that's the look of a sheriff's name, and we're here to serve the public. So let's see, the Republican Club got together, raised money, and I understand the amounts changed, and so I asked to put it on the agenda. The original amount was thirty-five thousand, three fifty-nine and eighty-eight cents. And I understand that amount has changed to thirty-six thousand, eight fifty-nine, eighty-eight. So it appears that there was another fifteen hundred dollar donation came through since I submitted this request. And you know, this, this amount is significant. And the most important thing about, about this whole thing, about this fundraiser, is not the amount of money raised, but the support of, for law enforcement we have in this county. You go up around some of the metropolitan areas, suburbs, and that support's not there. There's people defunding law enforcement. I'm proud of that you guys are supportive of us, giving us what we need. And I'm also pleased that these folks had this fundraiser, but most importantly, it means so much to us that the citizens of Benzen County support us, and that speaks volumes. So I appreciate it, but let's say we would, you guys, when y'all wanna say something?
Never to lost work. Yes, it was our pleasure to do this for the sheriff's office in soliciting the donations and sponsorships as we went around the county. I was blown away, just absolutely blown away with the support that the citizens have for good law enforcement. And we exceeded our goal of sixteen thousand by a little bit. That shows you what kind of support we have out there. And I had visited with the sheriff because we had a request from our constables, because they, their funding is kind of, you know, tight too. And he assured me that he would reach out to them with this extra amount of money and help them out with a few of their needs as well. So anyway, I, I, I thank the citizens of Benzen County.
Good job, thank you, guys. So is there a motion to accept the thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cent donation from the Republican Club? So Benzen County got motion by Mr. Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaBret. Any questions for the, either one of, any of them? Yeah, thank you for what you do, Sheriff. And it, it's exciting in Benzen County to see the public support for law enforcement and positive comments that we're hearing from, from our sheriff's office. Thank you for the great job you guys do. We have a motion and second, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I said, yeah, I don't.
We got a big old chick.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, thank you. He's gotta get dressed.
Well, that will get Jan for just a minute before we.
Hey, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Oh, yeah, that's not, not a problem. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number ten, discuss and consider reserve position for Fire Marshal's Office. Uh, Sam, you would like to address the court?
Would Judge uh, first of all, uh, Davis, Fire Marshal Davis uh apologized, he can't be here this morning. Uh, he asked me to come on his behalf. Basically, uh, in Van Zandt County, we uh, you know, at the Fire Marshal's Office, we have two, so we have two peace officers and administrative assistant. We're putting in lots of separate tanks, driving around this county, starting to do this over the last four or five months, we have lots of abatement issues. Uh, basically, we have a, what, what we're asking for is actually a full-time, non-paid peace officer. T Cole does not recognize reserves anymore, basically, this is somebody who wants to come volunteer their time. He's willing to, you know, pay for it, it shouldn't cost the county. Partly anything, I'm not gonna say there wouldn't be any cost for a reserve at, at an agency, but uh it should be very little. Uh, and the thing of it is, he's gonna be volunteering at this time with no pay for, for compensation. It'll be, he'll be able to fill in uh that, you know, by having someone like that. If I'm gone for a couple days or something and we, and there's still things that have to be done. Then, you know, we can always arrange to have, you know, that person come out and, you know, fill in, make sure the job's still getting done, making sure the citizens of Van Zandt County are taken care of. So we'd like, that's what we're asking for, at this time, is just to have one non-paid, uh, one, one full-time, non-paid peace officer added to our administration.
So the only real expense would have him would be water, fuel he used while he was volunteering his time and is it their annual fee to carry him on T Cole?
No. No, I think that, my, my understanding is, we have to, we have to have, so we'd have to have more than we would ever have, it's somewhere above TM, I think, once you get above. That, that, then you start having to pay, so, you know, having anywhere between, you know. Two or three, wouldn't cost you anything, as far as T Cole.
Did you say that he was uh interested in getting his uh. On-site sewer license?
Yes, sir, he, he expressed that he'd be more happy to pay for his uh, getting his license himself and going through the class. So that he could help out, the gentleman who's wanting to come on is a, about a fourteen-year veteran peace officer. And uh, he's willing to do, he's interested in learning more about the Fire Marshal's Office and, you know. Uh, he's done code enforcement, which kind of uh with the city, it's kind of a, kind of relates to the abatement. On our county level, which would be a great help, uh, you know, as far as doing things like that. Because that's been what we, where we've really been overtaken between the two of uh, the abatement and the OSSF is where we seem to spend most of our time, state of the day.
Now, would you be supervising you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I talked to, to Fire Marshal Davis and we talked about it and everything, that would be something I would be keeping up with. And I'm making sure that his hour, the only, there's so many hours being put in and uh, that, that all is being taken care of.
Apologize, Ronnie, that that wasn't, it doesn't say reserve deputy on there, but uh, every agency that we have in Van Zandt County. The constables, uh, the chair, all have reserve, uh, people that volunteer their time. And uh, this is just the first time that uh. Since I've been on board, if somebody's asked to, to volunteer to help out at the Fire Marshal.
Well, if I, if I could have one, that Commissioner Pierce. Our Fire Marshal now, Sean Davis, actually, this is, by having a reserve, something that you, you never know for down the road, so. He actually was able to hit the ground a little bit quicker running, because at a time whom Chuck Allen was a Fire Marshal, Sean actually uh, was a reserve. At the Fire Marshal's Office and was able to learn more about our county, you know. You, you, I mean, things are always changing and. Uh, so by having someone who has a little bit of knowledge, if something happens, somebody gets hurt, you know, somebody's out for a little while, you can always, you know, have somebody that steps in, making sure that our citizens are taken care of.
I'm making motion with Drew. I'm gonna have a motion by Commissioner LaBrant. Second, by Commissioner Melton. So you, you referenced, so we're. Yes. We're creating a reserve position, or are we appointing a person in that position?
We're not appointing a person in that position, just to be clear, Judge, not to get on terminology, but. T Cole has done away, there's actually no such thing as reserve, according to Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. You either have a full-time, non-paid, or you have a full-time paid position. Uh, they, they did away with that terminology of reserve about six or seven years ago.
Okay, so what, what would the motion be?
It'd be to have a uh, full-time, non-paid peace officer position.
Your motion, yes, if you're second, okay. Any other questions or discussion, or Sam?
Access that, to the computer once, you know. Uh, is that a computer? He care, he can, he can share with one of us. Yes.
Is that a problem? Okay, okay, have a motion, second, any other questions or discussion?
My, my only discussion is the term full-time, he's a, he may not be full-time, he, he. We're just allowing the Fire Marshal's Office to have. Non-paid positions.
Yes.
It's just the amount of time they put in is, doesn't, doesn't matter, they may put in an hour, they may put in forty hours, but it's all volunteers, I just want that.
And they are maybe full-time.
It could be, it could be, I, I, I know.
Just, it just gets down to the terminology of the way that, you know, with, with, with anything, you know. Uh, everybody always wants to change something up, and that was just the way that T Cole has changed their wording on uh, you know, often the way that they do things now.
Okay.
I'm adding here for my.
We do, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Item number eleven, discuss and consider, you know, possible extension of the deadline proposals on the P twenty-five radio project. Uh, Chad, you want to address the court on that?
Yes, sir, I put this on here, we've been, I've got two vendors, it's been a communication, we've been building proposals for the project, both vendors have asked for an extension. And we've talked into the broadband committee area, so we may have some options to. To do a joint effort, we build towers that work for broadband as well as the communication. And that's gonna require our vendors to take a second look at locations for tire sites, so they're gonna need more time. In order to do their engineering studies and what they need, before they can present the proposals.
Okay. So your proposal, I mean.
So I'd like to make a motion to extend the deadline an additional three weeks.
Three weeks, okay. That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion?
Is your, what, what would that date be?
Three weeks from today.
That'll be through.
Three weeks from the deadline, yeah.
Will three weeks enough time for that, or we need to do more in order for it to run a paper?
Well, I do, I don't know, I don't know any of the things, I, I have no idea. I, there were no bits back, so it's nothing.
So will three weeks work?
But if it's not, we'll have to extend it immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I can't tell you that the law states that if you amend a proposal, each vendor has to be notified with the new, with the amendment.
Well, the two of us being in contact with me, I can, I can find, I can get you their information.
You know, I have to be able to have something in my file, so.
I'll get you the information for the two vendors that's contacted me, so we make sure they get notified. Uh, as far as running a paper, will three weeks work, or do we need to go longer in order to get the paper?
We'll be able to get it in this week, but today, we won't be able to get it in this week, so you don't be.
So you wanna go out, will four weeks be better?
Maybe get it in to twenty-seven, two days later. Let's just put it out four weeks, that'd make more sense.
Uh, uh, okay.
So what, yeah, change it to four weeks and.
So what date would that be, ma'am?
Well, uh, it would have to be at the six day, so.
The original deadlines are twenty-third.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Yes, ma'am.
So you won't rescind that first motion? And.
We'll redo it, list, then in the deadline out to July twenty-third.
Okay, that's your second, Commissioner West?
That's good.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to extend the deadline for proposals on the P twenty-five radio system to July the twenty-third, that are running in the paper for a couple of weeks. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss and consider inner local agreement with City of Fruitvale. I think that's yours, Commissioner LaBrant?
Yes, sir, the City of Fruitvale approached me, they want to do a city cleanup day. And they don't really have the facilities to set up and manage the dumpsters and oversee it, so they approached me about working with us. They want to reimburse us for two dumpsters and the labor necessary, the holder cleanup, and our collection side at the precinct one barn. And so I've got this agreement here, which would stipulate that. At the. Time of our chief and commissioner's chief and then the location, which will be our barn. We'll hold a cleanup for that day, and what they intend to do is send a coupon out to the residents of Fruitvale. That gives the date, the time, and what they can bring, is it'll be limited to what we normally collect. And then whenever they show up the dump, instead of actually paying, they would hand a coupon, I work, the City of Fruitvale has already paid the expenses. Of the dumpsters and the labor.
Okay, I might make that motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, to enter into the, enter local agreement with City of Fruitvale for, for a dump day. Leah, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider replacing courthouse air conditioner unit. Uh, I placed that on there, we've been, Joe was in here, but he stepped out. This is something we've been working on for several months, uh, before we even turned them on. We're on borrowed time with this air conditioning unit out there, I mean, I, I, I honestly do not believe that it will make it through the summer. But uh, we've got to, we've got to start the process. Uh, and so I'm looking for, uh, talking to Sandy, she said it's over fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that unit was purchased in twenty-eleven. Twenty-eleven. Uh, and I think we need to go out for bids, uh, there's been discussion whether we use the same. Type unit or go to another type, another unit. But I think we need to open it up for bids and go out for bids on this air conditioning unit, get some specs and go out. So I'm just asking that, uh, I would make the motion that we seek bids for the courthouse air conditioning uh unit. That's my motion, you got a second by Commissioner Melton, uh, any questions or discussion?
Is it gonna help this run?
I don't know if there's any help for this run.
I just probably got the electricity to.
Well, that's part, that's part, we've had a encore come in. Sheriff, would you step out and see if Joe was available? Uh, we've had, we've had electrical people come in here. And do a study, look, see, to make sure, if you go with a different unit, it's gonna require more electricity.
But it should be more efficient at a lot rate.
Efficient, I mean, there's a lot of factors goes into it, what are you gonna do with your courthouse? How long, this unit, they told me this unit here, if you buy another unit like you've got here, it's good for about ten years. Okay, I mean, a lot of it's gonna be long-range planning. The other one would be quite a bit more expensive, but it would last long and less maintenance, only. But.
I think one of the most critical things we have right now is, is doing this because. This unit goes out outside, you can't just call and get a brand-new, you're gonna wait a bunch of weeks before you can get one in here.
Yes, and that's what I saw, sorry, Joe, uh, we're talking about the air, replacing the air conditioning unit outside. There's been a lot of, without going into, to uh, the numbers that we have. Uh, from one, cause we're gonna open it up for bids, we're gonna go out for bids, wouldn't be fair to say, hey, here's these numbers. Where we, we've had encore come in and do a study?
Yes, sir, uh, we contacted uh, one spare division company. Well, initially, then contact electrician, take a look at it, then they said we need to take a little time for make sure the transformer was placed under this year, we're starting to. The transformer were hanging below the, they were units. And they did kind of a little bit of a standard, they responded back, engineer, was they can't expect it, but they said, what we've got here is difficult.
Yeah. Yeah, now there would be, if you went to a different unit, you would, there'd be some ditching and electrical, quite a bit electrical work involved in that and everything. Yeah.
It's not just fucking switch.
So, uh. But we can bid both, we can bid both units out at the same time, I believe. Uh, and say, okay, what, what's the price and where we get the best, best deal, but we have been working on this for many months, several months.
We've been working this for many months.
Yeah.
Actually, for a few years, been uh, on the process. I bought a picture gate to check community, I've been here, September before here, it's supposed to go warm, I've been here. Each year, obviously, the spare conditions in the hallway, they struggle, it's a little warmer each year than this next year.
Yeah.
One of the fans, I think, I just said, right about a month ago.
It did, cause I was pulling.
It makes some pretty noise.
Oh, every time it starts.
Charge of metal, it's got guards, they're, they're, they're falling to the ground, it's just, it's.
Yeah. And, and part of what we're looking at is though, you know, I was in a meeting yesterday, Chad, and I were in a meeting yesterday, talking to, with some vendors, not about the air condition. But you can't give parts, they said they were sixty-six weeks behind, that's over a year. I mean, and, and talking about this air conditioning unit, I mean, once we start the process. Joe and I have discussed it, I don't think it's gonna last through the, through the summer.
It's probably.
Yeah, so. We do have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion or questions for Joe, Joe's researched it, he has the paperwork on it. So my motion is to go out for bids for the courthouse air conditioning, we have a second. All in favor say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Joe.
Thank you for all your good words, appreciate you.
Item number fourteen, discuss and consider renewal of contract with Tyler Technologies for land records, uh, Susan, you want to address the court?
I wasn't sure if they're gonna try to lock on, and this is pretty much the same contract that we had. And I think we were paying ninety-eight thousand dollars a year on the old contract. When I came into office, we were, I think, at the end of the contract, I never actually found the original contract to see where we were. So this new contract, which is, I say it's new, but I think. So this new contract, which is, I say it's new, but I think it's just a renewal, really. And about the same price, it will go ahead and get us up to speed on e-recording, which we don't do right now. And most counties are doing that, so that includes that in the price. Also, it's got a um I sent an email to IT, I think everyone's stood there, they looked at it, so just to make sure that they didn't have to do any more than they need to. It up skills our marriage licenses on who can go online and get their own copy of their certified copy of marriage licenses. It automatically, it'll have a color printer, it'll automatically stamp or stamps on there. So that it'll keep people from coming in. If they're upset, they can actually pull it offline and they'll pay online. So um and we are paying monthly on this and it changes to quarterly. We're going to have to pay quarterly. I mean, that's pretty much the changes.
Okay, but the price looks the same.
It is. I think it's just a little bit less and we get more. The one thing I did have them add to it was the um and I don't remember what they called it, but there's a security on when you come into our office to file your warranty deeds, whether it's a title company or whatever. There are people out there now who are trying to steal your land without you even seeing. So we were getting a lot of phone calls on that, like, what do you have? Do you have anything? And they do provide a software that's built in this. And um so they did go ahead and include that. So I had a, the first contract didn't have it on there. It's minimal. I think it was like two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars to have that on there. But the person is paying for that, so they sign up for it, they automatically get an email if somebody does anything with their warranty deed. Whether, if it's a title company and they they're selling it, they'll get a notification through their email that something's going on with their brand. So I think that's a real good program.
Any questions for Susan? Good job, Susan.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion?
Some is.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West to renew the contract with, or, you know, Tyler Technologies for land records. Any question or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider entering contract uh with Vista Solutions Group LP for elections.
Okay, that's me again. So anyways, this is actually a program that's going to be, it's a scan storage software is what it is. So it's for digital imaging. All voter records will be in the system so that we can go in there and pull things up. They will also assist us on different training and stuff. A lot of this is going to have to do with the lovely um applications by mail, ballots by mail. So we know that's fixing to go through. And they're fixing to vote on that, I think, today, actually, to see if what credentials everybody's going to have to have to vote. Are they going to have to have voter ID, whatever? So this program's going to help us keep up with everybody's application. Somebody moves out, we actually can go in there and put on there that that person, we've been notified that that person has moved. So that if they try to vote here and try to vote in Florida, it will catch that. Because that's happened before where we had someone that was registered in two different states because one state didn't notify. So that'll help on that. And uh chapter nineteen money, we have like, I think, six thousand dollars in chapter nineteen money that we can use towards this. So the first billing is like right at six thousand a pound. So we're going to pay for that with a check. Well, we have to pay for it first and then we apply for the chapter nineteen money and they'll pay for that. The balance will be due with the new budget. So we're going to split that because I didn't have that budget for this year. Use the money, apply the chapter nineteen money, get it back.
Okay. We do have a motion, a second. We did, didn't we?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to, got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Okay, we got second by Commissioner LaPraya. Any other questions or discussion?
So this is going to automatically increase your next year's budget by six thousand?
Yes. I believe, when I did my budget, I'm pretty sure I've kind of included that in the.
We haven't approved budget yet, so what's that going to do to that?
We'll have to address it when we get to.
Did you include it in your budget?
I I'll have to look, but I'm pretty sure I did. I mean, I think we, usually I over-budget for that. You know, for any additional contracts or money.
I just wanted to make sure that the courts are aware that if we approve this here, we're saying we're going to approve it in that budget.
That's correct. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other discussion? From eighteen to twenty-third, okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider placing no through truck signs on Van Zant County Road twenty-one forty-four. I believe that's yours, Virgil.
Yes, sir. It is. Uh Judge Commissioners, these are, these trucks, they find a way to get around and and these other county roads have almost got everything blocked off out there in in the twenty-one hundreds where they come off Interstate twenty and take county roads to the state highway. Most of the time, they they don't have the proper license or they don't have the proper registrations on the vehicles, so just want to say to address Mr. Jones, I said, the the sheriff and our constable are actively on these, these cases. It wasn't what uh maybe several weeks ago that Chief Shelton and the sheriff and I cornered a a truck out there on twenty-one twenty-nine and the sheriff himself wrote three tickets to the individual. So we we're out there and the sheriff's out there and and they're doing a good job and our constable's out there. Uh we're we're ticketing these people that come through these roads back and forth. So I make a motion that we uh we put no through truck signs on Van Zant County Road twenty-one forty-four.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
I I I would like to echo what uh Mr. Melton said. Right, it's real, it's a tough, it's a cat and mouse game and we don't have the uh the sheriff's office doesn't have the the uh staff, just you pretty well have to sit there all all the time to catch it because you never know when they're going to be there. And the constables have other things to do. So we tried it over, the sheriff's office assisted us over there. It's just really hard to get them. Uh fortunately, in precinct three, they're all around at Rock Pit, so we don't have a bigger area to cover as other precincts do. We're trying to stop it, we're working on it best we can.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget amendments. So move, got a motion by Commissioner West. Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion about the budget?
Wonder what precinct, one constable. Yes, sir. One of them is raising fuel and the next one's taking it out of fuel. Yes, but they came in the same day. The first one he raised is, he increased his fuel improvements, the second one, it decreased his.
Two different line items. One is uh three thirty and the other is four twenty-eight.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget amendments or is not any of them? Being none, all in favor of approving them, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of May twenty-twenty-one uh financial investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of of Commissioner's court.
So move, Pearson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion on the financial report? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments of county government and approval of entry of same in a court's minutes as matter of record. First, Wes, you have any comment?
I do, uh which is, this is a pretty normal thing, but every department uh has a man this month. And this, of course, is the last meeting of the month, so uh good job. Thank you.
The motion to approve the reports. Okay, motion, motion made by Mr. West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the reports? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.